Off our meeting. Where do we want to start tonight, Superintendent McDowell?
All right, so just to bring everyone up to speed. What I had sent in the, in that weekly update was that we would take tonight. And start working through budget adjustment conversations. And if you remember at the last board meeting. Brian had talked about. The timeline that we had put together that we all took a look at and we're in that phase right now between. August thirty first and September thirty first, which is really more of the planning and developing options phases and so. We, we can't wait any longer and we need to start having the conversation and so. What I'm going to start with tonight is have Jen Subert walk through and just remind everybody. Where we currently are with our revised budget. And get us up to speed of, of what are the financial current realities and then where we. Where we're looking to be in the fall of twenty one and then once we do that. I'm hoping that as a board, we can have a conversation and really. Try to put together a guiding change, the start of a guiding change document defining what's our current reality. What are the desired results that the board wants to see when this is all said and done and what are the things, at least at this point, that we won't do or would be off limits? Because that'll give us some parameters that I can then start having discussions with the administrative team. And know which direction to be heading as far as what to look into and what not to look into. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jen and have her go through a quick presentation on, on the financial side of things.
Okay, thank you. Can you see my screen? Just wanted to make sure. Yep, okay, so today we'll talk about the budget adjustment planning. Alright, so our current budget for twenty twenty one, the adopted budget. Was approved overspending by one point six eight one million dollars. So that will leave our ending fund balance for the unassigned. At approximately eleven thousand nine hundred and ten thousand dollars. So from there, the fund balance policy, it's policy number seven fourteen. Basically states that if an imbalance budget is approved, then that the administration will be directed to develop a plan. To provide a balanced budget in the future. So that's what we're starting to work on now. Just kind of a reminder of where we're at with our ending fund balances for the unassigned, our actual eighteen nineteen. Was thirteen point five million dollars, the projected for nineteen twenty, based on the revised budget. Was again about thirteen. Forty eight thousand. Dollars and the projected twenty twenty, based on our current. Approximately eight mil. Million seven hundred and seventy. Abilities, so some examples are like state and federal funding, declining enrollment. And then also to provide funds for unforeseen expenditures. And planned future major expenditures, so any type of emergency type expenditure or just, you know, saving money up for future. Bigger expenditures. So uncertainties affecting the fund balance can be, you know, both less revenue and or additional expenses. Some key trends to look at that we've been kind of starting to talk about are our student enrollment numbers. So when we look at our pre K through twelve adjusted pupil units for eighteen nineteen. We're at four thousand seven seventy nine nineteen twenty, that's an actual number as of today, it might change just. Very slightly, but it's four thousand seven hundred and thirty eight, so that's a decrease of forty one point oh eight. And then if we look at the twenty twenty one projection, which so far is holding pretty close, it's four thousand seven hundred and ten. So again, that's a decrease there of about twenty eight point three one. And then twenty one twenty two, we have a projection of four thousand six ninety, which is another decrease of about nineteen point five one. When we look at our staffing FTEs. Eighteen nineteen actuals, two hundred and ninety one nineteen twenty actuals, two hundred and ninety seven, so it's an increase of about five point eight. And then the twenty twenty one projection, we're at three oh two. Again, an increase of about another five FTE. Our twenty twenty one average FTE cost is about ninety nine thousand. So those add up very quickly. And then I just wanted to note that there are some additional staffing related. Covid ads that we're doing, but I didn't include them in that, that FTE number because we plan to use CARES funding for those. So some additional considerations, our costs increase yearly for, you know, steps, lanes, benefits, operational costs. And that's estimated at about one point two million. We anticipate no change from the state in the formula allowance at this point. And then our twenty one twenty two enrollment loss totals about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So if we were to make no budget adjustments, our twenty one twenty two budget would be deficit spending by. The one point six that we're currently overspending. Plus the one point two that's for salaries, benefits and operational costs and then plus the hundred and ninety. That we're losing on the declining enrollment, so it's about three million dollars. And at that point, we would also be at our fund balance policy minimum. So that is really all I have, unless you guys have questions, I can turn it back over to Dr. McDowell.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, really short and brief, but just wanted to give, you know, another view of. What, what the financial picture looks like in terms of why, why do we need to have discussions about budget adjustments? The last time that we went into serious budget adjustments, if I'm reading documents correctly, was two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen. We're kind of in the same situation. And the biggest thing, I, my takeaway is, as, as Jen and I talk is really that last slide that. Points out what we talked, we've talked about the last couple of times when budgets has come up is. Our ongoing annual costs continue to rise at about a million dollars a year, which is why if we don't make adjustments. We see that increase exponentially and not just the, the deficit spend that we have, so one point. Five, one point six, all of a sudden becomes closer to three when you add that in there. The biggest, the other thing that I'll just re-highlight is the biggest change to our budget over the last two years. Is, as we know, a decrease in students, which equates to a decrease in dollars. As well as an increase in staffing and so for those people listening, I just reminder that an FTE is a full-time equivalent teacher. And that's that average of just under a hundred thousand dollars with benefits and salary and all that goes into that, so. With that. You know, we open it up to questions or we can, we can dig into our, our guiding change doc, document right away. And start having a conversation.
Does anyone have any questions before we jump into the document? Alright, I'm not seeing anything, so we'll just jump right in.
Okay, I'll. If I can share my screen effectively here. Alright, are you seeing my screen? Yes, so everybody should be seeing guiding change twenty twenty one. Alright, so I did it this way so that I can hopefully type into it and so a couple of things I thought were important, one is. You know, budget adjustments, everyone knows are not a fun thing to do, they're, they're difficult. When we get down to the actual nuts and bolts of making budget adjustments. There are always perceived winners and losers in this and so. It's really important that we stay focused on what I think is. Things that are not only desirable for us as a district, but are feasible and also sustainable over time. Because those are the things that, that we hold as most important and in order to do that. What I put at the top of this was our current mission statement. Which really speaks to, you know, developing individuals that are lifelong learners. And that have the ability to thrive in this rapidly changing and currently unprecedented times. In, and so to that end. When we put together guiding chains, what we're really looking at is working from the left to the right. And defining what is our current context and reality and so the best. Example I can give is Jen just provided us our financial current reality, which is. At a minimum, we're one point six and change deficit spending. Now, the current reality isn't always negative stuff, it's also things we like, it's stuff that's going well, it's, it's the things that. Hastings Schools is, is proud of and so. What the administration really needs as a larger group is to, is to know and understand. What does the, how does the board view our current reality and context?
Well, I'd like to say as a positive, I think we have a. Very strong music program that's. Recognized locally, regionally and nationally. And then I think the commitment that we've made over the last two or three years to equity focused programming. Are. Strong components to our current reality. Yeah, and on the, kind of on the other side, I mean, I, I do think it's, we do have to recognize. Declining enrollment. Issue and that until we see. Some sort of different type of housing investment. That's, that's gonna be a part of our reality.
Does anyone else have any comments they'd like to make, Scott?
We have a. Supportive community, not only supportive of our schools and our students in. Spirit in. Connectivity with our students and our, you know, the community with the students and the students to the community. But also fiscally. We have had a very generous community. Support in. Another current. Reality is that our healthcare, which is self-funded is. So. And we're not sure what's going to happen.
Can you, Scott, can you go back to that first statement? I don't know that I, I, I lost it while I was typing.
Just our, our community engages with our schools. And our schools engage with the community, so it's, it's, it's a, it's a connection that we have. And part of that is that our community has been very generous. With their financial support in terms of levy support, bond support.
That brings up something I just want to make sure everyone's aware of, so our, our next levy. Come, it ends in twenty, not until twenty twenty four. So twenty twenty three is when we'd be looking at going back out and, and doing something different, so if that might be a question that people. Ask is, well, if we, if we're deficit spending, are we going to go out for another levy? Well, right now, we are where we are until we get to twenty twenty three with that.
Can I ask a question on that? And thank you for reminding me about the timing. And Jen, maybe you know this off the top of your head, how close are we as a district to being at the maximum levy ask? Technology levies aside, how close are we to? To the ceiling? I don't think we can buy our way out of this problem, just to be clear, just curious.
I don't know off the top of my head, but I will look. I know where to get it.
Okay, if you could even just send it out in the next day or two, that'd be fabulous, thank you, oh, well, like a week. Don't, you don't have to run and send it out tomorrow. But shortly, that would be nice, I would appreciate being reminded of that.
Is there anything else we have that people want to share around? Context and current reality. This is the point, if we were in session, I'd be walking around the room and doing that proximity thing with people, right?
I was going to add that along with the equity focused programming, we do also know that our schools are becoming more diverse. And so bringing those, tying those two together, I think is important. And also another reality is that we don't know the state of state funding as they recover from this pandemic. And so we have to keep that in mind as we look at our own budget.
I think that's a really important point, Kelsey, that's a very, very. Foggy future. The last point that I had jotted down in preparation. That I think our district has done well at is. Recognizing the range of tracks that students can take upon graduation. And that we support students entering technical fields in coordination with. Partnering organizations and military and two and four-year college programs, so I think acknowledging that. It's not all, it's not all college track focused. And that reaches all the way down to, like, when I think about our middle school's ability to do. Some technology and fax programming.
Does that capture it?
Yes, thank you.
I think we need to recognize too, that as a board, we approved additional staffing. In support of our. In support of our staff and our students for mental health and special services. So we, we knowingly took on part of this, you know, and, and. We knew that there would be a impact here and we also knew that there would have to be a balance somewhere else. So we are now at the balance portion of the program.
I think that's an important, that's an important piece of, and I don't know how much discussion people want to have around that, but. You know, Hastings, to this point, at least coming in as more of a new person to it, has been really lucky to this point, right? Where. While in the last round of, of budget cuts, there were changes made to the middle school, there was changes made to some programming. Hastings has been able to this point to really. Manage to find all of the really low hanging fruit to recapture back some of that. Those dollars that otherwise, you know, didn't get spent in order to. Maintain a lot of the programming, maintain a lot of the things that. It historically have been important to Hastings and it's. We, we might be to that point where we have to have some difficult conversations that. Hastings has reached the point that many other districts have reached well before us. Which is making some of those reconciliations with. Things that over time become important, like mental health and like special services and increases in. The diversity of our student population, which while everything is important, not everything can be supported equally from a financial. Piece as we move forward and, and those are the things that. We really, I'm hoping that as a board, we can find ways to be on the same page with. In terms of having one voice about what we feel strong about and. Being able to really articulate the why behind some of the decisions that we'll make along the way.
Okay, so Brian?
I think we should also make sure that we note, not just obviously support supports, but community support around. Multiple, I mean, a lot of different sports programs, we support tons of different sorts, sports programs within the community. Our schools offer quite a number of different varied sports. And we have managed to hold ourselves up even in terms of middle school sports while other. Districts have let them, long since let them go.
Anything else we want to put in the current reality column?
Just one thing, and this is around community support, but I'd like to. Note something there about our business support that we have in Hastings. Not only with, with things like the all-night graduation party. But the support work that we have from different foundations and businesses. Within Hastings for things like our scholarship, our local scholarship program are, are huge. And.
I do.
Bluff is a good example of that too.
Yep, absolutely, and, and I do have a concern with. What that's going to look like as we navigate our way through. The remainder of the pandemic, you know, how, how do these businesses? Do all of them survive, you know, do we still have that same level of support? Because it's something that we are very lucky to have.
As you look at that column, is based on what you've verbalized, have I captured that? Am I, did I miss something? Is there more that you want added to those statements? And obviously, we can always come back later, but before we move on, I thought I'd ask that.
It looks good from my standpoint, but yes, I think as we begin navigating to the right. You know, to the columns to the right, that will probably be stopping back at this one.
Alright. I'll move us on then. So desired results, so. Sometimes these are the exact same thing or. A different thing than what's in the current reality, but it's really trying to get at that, that base question of. As you look at today and into the future, right, because we want to back to the, we're really trying to make sure we're. Looking at desirability, feasibility and sustainability and so. What is it that we desire as we move through this process to maintain and continue?
I have two that I'd like to add, one is going through the process, I'd like to see. Opportunities for public input. I think some of the ones that were used, the like survey monkeys and, and polls. And small groups were successful, I'd like to see that as a, in the process piece. And then, and maybe this is not exactly what you're looking for, but. I'm open to the conversation that this is. Something that might need one or two years to resolve, so if we were to. I don't know that we have to go into a hundred percent balanced budget in twenty one twenty two. But. We have to be moving in the direction of a balanced budget. So if something takes a couple of years to implement, so, I mean, I, I, I like numbers, so I'd like us to be at no more than a million dollars deficit spend twenty one twenty two. Targeting zero and twenty two twenty three are balanced. Because I think that. Just for a fr, general framework, that it, for a twenty one twenty two budget, I could see us deficit spending like. Up to a million dollars. With a target of twenty two twenty three being at balanced. So that the, that the adjust budget, budget adjustments could be a multi-year. Could be a multi-year conversation. I don't want to cut drastically and find that it's not sustainable.
Yeah, and I think that goes back to, you know, at the top, the three goals and really making sure that whatever plan we come up with, it has to be sustainable. And it can't just work for a couple of years and then we notice that, you know, we're overwhelmed with the need.
Yeah, well, and the reality is. You know, we did do this in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, it feels painful enough that it was more recent than that, but. This is a constant, this is a constant process, but. And we'll have to do something like it again, or somebody will, who's ever on the board. I just think. We should say upfront that, you know. I acknowledge that our current. Fund balance is above our policy level. And I don't want to make a decision. And implemented in one year, if it, if it's better served to be implemented in two. And so all I'm trying to do is operationalize that desirable, feasible, sustainable, and give an example of what that means to me.
I guess I'm looking and saying that, you know. We're gonna have to realize what's sustainable. And then, you know, work back what's feasible and then what's desirable, but part of this. It looking what's sustainable is, you know, we're very lucky in this county that the first half. Taxes, you know, folks paid them and we, the county as a whole. Did not see a big jump in, in unpaid taxes thereby when. The taxes get paid, that's where, you know, part of the school district's money comes from. And, you know, going into the second half of the year, you know, the big unknown, I think, is. You know, Lisa kind of hit around about it was, you know, where are we at with the businesses and, and, you know. Can they maintain and sustain, you know. Their livelihood and thereby, you know, contribute financially through their taxes to help support the school system and that. To me, that's the biggest unknown in the whole process, you know, you talk to business folks in the community that. Are, you know, just struggling or they're, they're not going to make it, they're looking at, you know. A quarter and maybe if things don't change, things, you know. Business will go away and that's, that affects our sustainability in the big picture. Because it's all about money, it's all about the income that supports the school system and if. You know, what we want to do as a board, what's good for the kiddos, we're gonna have to look very hard to find. You know, tighten down to look at what is sustainable moving forward in a pandemic because. As things go right now. We're probably not going to be at a point where in three to five years, it'll be back to normal, it, it, this is going to be. A very. Difficult time for district two hundred, let alone education in general throughout the whole country. And, you know, we as the governing body, the elected folks. For the school district have to be very considered of what is sustainable, then feasible and then desirable.
So. with regard to that, the middle column there and we what the desired result is is really about what what do we, what are we hoping will happen because of what we do? Right? So what's the desired, what's the desired outcome?
I am hope, I I am hoping that we do not have program eliminations. Program adjustments are one thing. Program eliminations is that's as drastic as it gets. I'm also hoping that our class sizes can remain low when compared to our surrounding districts at our conference. And 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 when I'm talking about program eliminations, I'm talking not only curricular, but also extracurricular. So our our fine arts programs, our sports programs, et cetera.
On top of that, I want to add that the equity piece to not just maintain it, but to actually grow it. You know, as it was stated earlier, that Hastings is becoming more diverse, we're seeing more diversity in the classrooms. So I think we need to maintain a focus on that that program. Uh, same with mental health, uh, the mental health component, uh, I think is actually going to be, there's going to be a higher demand for it over the next few years. So if we can try to stay ahead of it, um, that is, that would be a desired result.
Yeah, and I would absolutely agree with that, especially, I mean, we don't know how kids are going to respond post COVID and what that is going to do to mental health and things like that. And so recognizing that 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 needs to be at the forefront and we already added on, you know, for mental health supports. So we already knew that there was a need there. And making sure that we continue to support that need and look at what we need to be doing for our kiddos. So anyone else have anything they want to add? I'm not seeing anyone unmuted.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, let's move into unacceptable means. And so what this, what this area really is talking about is what what won't we do, what won't we impact? These are the the things that help us, for example, we're not going to eliminate any programming that would put us in violation of federal law, state law, right? We're not going to do anything that would, um, ultimately cause us to lose funding, which would, which would put us in a worse situation. It then could, so that I have your in your mind in that frame. It also can talk about, and this is more of of kind of what Scott was alluding to with program eliminations. You know, are there any quote unquote sacred cows, right? Are there any, are there anything, is there anything that is so important to us that we will not choose to do that? And that's, and it's, I think it's important that the board, um, have a conversation about those things because we're going to have to put stuff on the table. Um, and so it it would be important for us to to know if out of the, out of the gate, if there is, if there are things that people are feeling strongly about.
Stephanie?
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, it's been said already, but the music and athletics, I I think that is what I would, I would classify them as the the sacred cow.
Yeah, I think making sure that we protect the fine arts is very important in this community. And I think, I mean, it's important for kiddos to to have those opportunities.
So is this the way you want me to word it?
Yeah.
I I guess I would like some clarification around that. When we say we will protect the fine arts and athletics, what does that? I'm not going to assume what you mean. I'd I'd like to hear what what do you, what do you mean? That we won't eliminate them, that we won't change anything about them? What does that mean?
To me, what that means is that we know the community, we know the students are, they, they, uh, what is the word that I'm trying to look for? It is, it's important. And so if we're looking at cuts, I would say we need to look at keeping those and and looking at alternatives or like getting creative if we have to make cuts in these areas. That's I, does that help at all, Scott?
Yeah. So so what you're, what what I hear you saying, and I just want to, I'm just asking to understand is I'm hearing you saying that protect means we will not eliminate. Protect does not mean that there couldn't be changes. Right?
Strategic, absolutely.
Right, okay.
Does it, can I ask just to clarify further? So that what I'm hearing then is let's say that it's it's, uh, fine arts, they're on the table are fine arts and underwater basket weaving, for example. Right? Underwater basket weaving is going to take, is 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 what we're going to look at instead of fine arts. That'll be our last. Fine arts and athletics are are so important as a as a system, that those are the two things that we're going to work our way through everything else before we really look at those two.
Yeah, exactly what I'm saying. If if we're weighing, uh, show choir versus underwater basket weaving, you know, we would have to to weigh those options. What is the benefit to eliminating one over the other? So it, yeah, placing emphasis on fine arts and athletics when considering budget cuts.
Okay.
Um, did Becky, did I see your hand go up? Okay. And then Brian.
I just wanted to agree with Stephanie. I, uh, think that it's really important to, uh, protect or not eliminate these, especially if we're focusing on a mental health for students. And during the COVID and this pandemic, I think it's really important that we protect or not eliminate or change in some way if we have to, you know, one or the other, look at the numbers and, you know, see what we can do, but especially for focusing on the mental health and everything, I think it's really important to keep these intact if we possibly can.
Lisa? Oh, Brian first, sorry. Uh, just in Lisa.
Yeah.
I think that, um, first of all, I I agree a hundred percent on on those two for sure. I do want to make sure that it's clear that kind of to Scott's point that while saying we are doing everything in our power to not obviously eliminate a sport or something, um, within the fine arts, that there's nothing wrong with having a conversation with those directors about ways that they might be able to make some adjustment that might help. For example, just an example, because my daughter's in Riverside. If we went to Luke and said, hey, is there a way that, now, how much would you save if we only did one costume change versus two? You know, things like that, that, um, would not impact the overall, but might save a few dollars here and there. Just things, ideas like that that we might want to throw out, um, while obviously not talking elimination, but saying, hey, is there a way we can work together to try to, um, work on the budget a little bit?
Does that, can you see that, Brian? Does that what I put in parentheses? Does that help?
All right.
Yeah, that helps.
All right, Lisa.
Okay, I I got booted off on my computer, so switch to my phone. Um, there's no, uh, easy way to say this. Putting the piece in parentheses helps. Because we're wait, I feel like we're way too early in this process to say we will not affect fine arts and we will not affect athletics. And I don't feel comfortable with those two being in the same sentence. I don't see them in the same way. I think, um, I I'm not convinced as much as I support those programs, I'm not convinced that anything needs to be on the sacred cow list because this is going to be a difficult process. I would agree with Scott. I don't want to see program elimination. I would like us to look at, um, modifications, whether that's contact time, when it gets offered, when it's initially offered, and or community partners that would better be able to provide that that asset. Um, and can we partner with them and and bring supporting organizations in? It it can stay on for purposes of discussion, especially if it keeps those parentheses in there, and I'm comfortable with that, but, um, I've done this before and it I think it makes it really hard if if you put things that you love, but that maybe don't align quite exactly with the academic outcome.
But I think, um, I wouldn't disagree. And I think it might be worth us, you know, circling back to the desired results and clarifying what's our desired results. Because I think the ultimate desired result is to have a balanced budget. That's the big piece, right? And, you know, my stomach's already turning having this conversation, um, because it's, it's, I've been through it before as well. And and, uh, there, there's nothing popular about making these decisions. But, um, when I look at what's in our desired column in my head, I'm already thinking about, you know, in a school system, eighty, eighty-five percent of our dollars are spent on people. And people do one of two things. They either keep our class sizes low and support our class sizes, or they deliver programming that we want. Which is one of the reasons why I started with, Hastings has already been through this a couple of years ago. And a lot of the really low, low hanging fruit was trimmed. And so there, I I also don't want to be in a position where we're we, I just don't want to dance around what's right in front of us, uh, which is some really tough decisions. Because when it comes down to it, it is about class size, it is about programming, it's about, it's about people. And it's how do we do it differently? To make it the best that we can make it with what we have and live inside of our means.
Bob, I guess I'd go back then to the desired results and start out with, you know, a statement about we want to balanced budget to start with, or a budget that is, you know, sustainable. Let's go with that. I think that that's probably, you know, we need to be, okay.
Scott, did I see your hand go up?
It did. Just a question for the group and then, uh, something to add to the unacceptable list. So I'll start with the add to the unacceptable, since I see the cursor blinking there.
Sorry.
And no, that's fine. Uh, I would say, um, anything that would diminish the health and or safety of our staff and our students would be on the unacceptable list. And then I have, I have a question here. Would we be better served, since we're putting caveats on the fine arts and athletics, would we be better served to move them from the unacceptable list over to the desired results list? And rather than phrasing it as a negative phrase, it is a positive, where we say, you know, we, we, we value and we would, and we would like to protect our fine arts program. We value and we would like to protect our athletics program. That's a question for the group, just to
Sure.
Just, just
I think that's a smart idea, Scott. We should have thought about that sooner.
Yeah. And I'm okay with that. Um, with, I was actually going to add to that and just talk about the, um, we can go back to what we already have, and that is that we offer kids multiple tracks, right? We give them opportunities beyond, uh, college prep and making sure that, and for me, I think this is part of that equity piece that we want to continue is recognizing that not all children are going to follow the same path and making sure that we maintain, uh, different options for kiddos. Not saying we can't touch them at all, I'm just saying we need to, um, make sure that we continue to offer students multiple options for their end of career path.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. I'm very proud of the technical programs that we offered at Hastings High School. And I think it would be a a real shame to detract from that because there's a big need there. And it's a, and it's a great fit for some of our students. Just like honors programs are a great fit for some of our students.
So is there something you want me to capture?
Um, you know, that we value, um, offering students multiple like career pathways, maybe as a way to to put it, um, and just kind of continuing with the value statements from above. Maybe. But I do think the mental health comment and the health in general comment is really important, especially given our decisions this spring and why we added those mental health supports. And I know we've talked about strategic versus tactical, and we still need to kind of plan this long term strategic plan with the mental health of our students. But until we get there, we need to maintain, um, the tactical approach that we've taken, so. Does anyone else have any comments they want to add? Not seeing anyone.
All right. So I would say this is a good start. Um, I I don't know that I would, I would say that it's a finalized document at this point. I think, um, you know, as I started the conversation, in in a perfect world, what I'm hoping, what I'm hoping for is from the board to give us kind of a sandbox to start with. And to be honest, right now, I don't have a sandbox. I have us protecting everything. And I'll go back to the the fact that, um, you know, it's, it is no more, this, this type of thing is no more complex than when we look at our own home budgets. And the idea that when we get to places in our lives with kids where kid A does something, let's say it's a, um, a private sport or something that is going to cost us extra money to do. We sometimes have to give up something else in order to do that, because that's more important at that point in time. And it's sustainable for a certain amount of time. And that's going to be what we're going to be asking you as board members to do. Is to make some difficult choices, because, um, as we look at this list in this draft, I know that what we want to make sure that we share with our community is that that we do value and we, and we put great importance on what we're able to provide students, and that is very, very important. But we don't make reductions in the budget by not making some difficult choices. But we don't make reductions in the budget by not making some difficult choices inside of that budget. So. That'll be my, my homework for you is I'll, I will, I will email this out as a draft to everybody. And then I'll be looking for some, you know, potentially some. Feedback over the next week or some clarifying over the next week so that I can start with our administrative teams. To really start coming up with some ideas of what, what and where do we want to begin attacking this from the. From the school organization side of it. So like Lisa brought up, we can then have something to bring out to different community groups as we work through this. Because I need that team to, to be able to articulate. Areas and costings with areas and potential options for you to be considering as a school board.
Lisa, you're unmuted. Did you have something to add?
No, I was gonna applaud wildly when Superintendent McDowell says you don't. You know, what we have here is a list of. The current operating practices. And, and that's, that's fine because this is a really dang cold pool of water to get into.
Yep.
And, and I appreciate the hesitancy of doing it and coming out and saying. Just how hard it's going to be and then, and then turning that into actual. Desired results. So I, I appreciate that there's a next step coming in the short term because we just cannot. We can't take too much longer to get into this icy cold pool of water.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with that, what. Having gone through this before. One of the hardest things to. To rectify throughout the process is that. When you're looking at eighty to eighty-five percent of your budget being spent on the people that we employ within the district. That. Making changes is going to. Almost inevitably impact. People. And impact our students. And sometimes it feels like. You're given choices. And you're choosing. The lesser of two, you know, the lesser of two poor choices. You know. So. It, it's a tough process, so.
I think Becky's got her hand up.
Kelsey's got her head down. So Scott and you guys have done this before, so there's few of us that are new to the board. So I feel like I'm very naive when it comes to trying to come up with these kind of decisions, right, tonight because. I've never done this, so I don't know what I should put on here. I understand that there is personnel, but I don't know what else.
Well, I think.
What else we would be putting on here right now because I'm not really sure, you know, yes, do we look at staffing? Do we look at? You know, so it's really hard for me to sit here and try and do this tonight because I don't, I've never done it before, so I'm like. You know, it'd be nice guidance or what did you guys have done before? So I'm like, oh, that like completely makes sense or.
I will say we used a very different process and it was driven at the administrative level previously. That brought the specifics back, but I, when I look at this, this is the hard choice, okay? I think. So right now we have bullets that say, we hope not to eliminate programs. We hope we maintain low class sizes. And we hope that. We maintain a focus on mental health. Okay, here's the ugly reality of this statement. We can't have all those bullets on there at the same time. Alright, it's not adding things. It's not saying things. It's taking things off. It's saying. We are willing to accept. Larger class sizes at, you know, fill in the blank, at the elementary level. Of five students per class, middle school of ten and high school of ten. We will look for community partners to assist in providing mental health services to students. Which means we're not doing it anymore. So it's, it's the fact that all of these bullets are on here. And all of these things are important. That's, that we haven't done the hard work. The hard work is saying. Okay, we don't, we're not going to have program elimination unless student population is below this level. Or demand is declining and that's what happened to us last time. We eliminated a program that was declining in, in engagement. So you'd say. We didn't intend not to have program elimination. We will have to increase class size. That's the trade-off. That's the thing you have to say. Or we will accept program elimination. And we will reduce mental health services no more than twenty percent. Of current level. I mean, that's where we're eventually going to have to get to, I think.
And if I, if I read documents correctly and had got an understanding of the gist of what you did in fourteen fifteen. Essentially, the process at that time. Was to go to each of the levels, if not buildings, and say. Give us an idea of what you can cut out of. Your programming at the high school. Programming is not a, not a good word. What, what reductions can you make at the high school? And that, those reductions could be due to class size increases or certain classes going away for a while or things like that. Or the middle school, that type of piece.
Changing, changing the schedule.
Changing.
Was, was born out of the, the previous, the previous school round.
Yep, yep. And there's advantages and disadvantages to that, right? You know, something big like that allows you to save staffing and keep some programming. Maybe not all of it at all the same time. We're, we're in a good place. That's why I sent out that, that Metro Exu. Document so that you could see, we're in a really good spot right now when it comes to class size and. And a lot of districts aren't in that place. They're already at the high end and so there's not an ability to move. We can look at class sizes. We would, you know, I would recommend that we, we always shoot to be right in the middle of that pack somewhere. You know, not on the one extreme, not on the other extreme and because those seem to be manageable and so we can. We can easily put numbers together for stuff like that to be able to say, alright, if we increase class sizes K four. This much, here's how much FTE we save. And then as a board, then you'd have to say, well, that's worth it to us or no, it's not worth. It's not worth what we would go through or lose to save this little bit of money. So then we'd go back to the drawing board and try to find something else. But that's kind of Becky where we would be going. Starting with and so. There isn't a lot in facilities in fourteen fifteen or before that, you know, we've already, we've already attacked the facilities in terms of. Making reductions to the amount of, of physical plants that we have. We, we don't have any, really anywhere to go there. We already have one middle school. We already have one high school. We have three elementary schools. We can't get much smaller from that standpoint. At administratively and at the district office, I, I don't know where you'd get any smaller there. And so we are back to, we're back to buildings. We're back to. Creatively reconfiguring some things probably. That might be the. Term of. But that's what we'll have to, where I don't go down one road and as a board, you didn't want me to go down that road with staff to begin with. That's, that's what I'm really trying to avoid. If there's anything, you know, and. Music and athletics, no surprise, right? That's, that's a huge piece of the experience in Hastings. And so if, if that, if that's going to take a priority, then, then what do we, what do we look at otherwise? How do we do things? And that's everything like Scott or that, like Lisa and Brian brought up is that could include. Ways of partnering with community resources to do some things where the program doesn't disappear. But it just isn't part of what we do as. A program in, under the Hastings Schools umbrella. I don't know what that would be yet, but that's, that's what we needed to, that's what, those are the types of things that I needed to hear is, is that type of stuff.
Dave, did you have something to add?
I think that, you know, what I see here is, is a start. I, I don't think we want to. You know, the two things that we have down for. Unacceptable, I mean, that ties it up pretty good right there. I mean. Now we're down to the point of looking at, you know, okay. What's the cost of personnel? What's the cost of services? And what's the cost of maintaining buildings? And when those items come through and with the. Numbers reduction that Jen talked about earlier this evening. Some of these things might be harder to do, but yet maybe some things might be easier to do. But I think, you know, we've gotten a start here. You know, cutting back at a budget, you know, be it your family budget or business or the school district. Is always hard. It's, it's, it's like, you know. Everybody has wants and thoughts and. Wants to go what direction, but you know, it's. I think we've got. A lot on our plate to deal with, but I think it's something that, you know. With some more digging and, and when we get down to the numbers. I'm sure that we could find the means to get ourselves at least close to. A balance in this year and then. Have a balanced budget or a sense that we will have a balanced budget in the next year and moving forward.
Did anyone else want to add something?
No, well, just, just one piece of summary. I think as we start the back and forth, the process will become a lot more clear. You know, right now, it. It's very easy to put up, well, we, you know, like we've already talked about, we'd like to have these desired results. And of course, we don't want to cut anything and that's kind of where, where we're all at right now. But I think as some of the options start coming back or some of the ideas start coming back. That will foster further conversation and further ideas from the board as well. Because something may come back that, you know, that, that we look at and we go, no, 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 we don't want to go down that road. Okay, great, then we can pivot to something else or there may be something that, that. Bring, that comes to us that spurs further conversation that leads to another idea, so. And, and Lisa's very right. We've not, I, I like this. I think this is a really good idea. But this is very different from how we have done it previously. And I think it's different in a good way, so.
Alright, well, I will. I'll make, I'll turn this into a PDF and I will send it out. I'll have Becky post it on the website as well. So that people can, can see it and, and we can be fully transparent. It'll say draft on it. But we can be transparent with the community in terms of what the conversation is at this point in time. Because I'm sure it will change. Can stop sharing my screen, I think here. Here we go. So I don't, the only other thing I would have is it just a question of if there's anything that any of the board members have for me or Jen? In terms of. Moving forward in, in the short term.
Is this the time for completely unrelated topics? Or does it still have to relate to budget?
That is up to the board chair.
Kelsey?
Um, well, let's see if there's any comments about budget first and if not, then this is the time for unrelated comments.
Go for it, Lisa.
Alright, you're up.
This is, maybe it's not a simple question. I'm just curious of the, this is super specific. The timeline when we anticipate the guidance from MDE or at least go ahead from MDE on the revising our food service plan. I think everybody, I at least was surprised to see that modification, so I'm sure there's a.
We all were.
Wait back at everybody's heels that are actually having to make it happen, but I'm just curious about the timeline.
So we're working on an announcement right now and we're thinking the effective date will be Monday, the fourteenth.
Well, that seems soon enough.
We plan on communicating it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. That, that was a total curiosity question. Thank you.
Alright.
Okay, other, sorry. Other question, yet another unrelated topic. The board retreat. Is that a? That's, we're still going for that, right? We're still on for the second and the third.
I have it on the calendar for that as the tentative hole, just because again, we had to reserve a place for it, so. I would say that's where we are now.
So we're kind of seeing how Dave's recovery goes.
Yep.
Really, so.
I hear he's got a boot. Ready to roll. Okay.
Are there any other unrelated questions just as we're on an unrelated? Thing here, Dave?
Just about the, the board retreat. If it is the second and third, what would that timeframe be? I just want to make sure that I have childcare set up or at least start the conversation.
Sure. What we had talked about before was. Doing a Friday evening and then doing it on a Saturday. So I think the. They think the idea was like Friday at five or six.
Yeah. If it, to figure out the specific times that we talked about, but it was in the evening. Just give me a minute and then.
While she's searching, Bob, I was going to ask you for a, a quick overview of how day one and day two went.
Day one and day two, knock on wood, at least from our perspective. I only witnessed one crying student and they quickly stopped as we got them in the building. New kindergartner, but otherwise it's been going really well. The amount of work that the principals put into planning, the details and each one of their buildings has paid off immensely. And so we've, we've had a relatively smooth start. Transportation has worked beautifully. The biggest thing that in the last two days that I know principals are working on is just. One, the details around getting kids in and out of the lunchroom and to wherever then they need to go. And the other is the, you know, kids are kids and when they see one another, they want to be by one another. And so it's, it's now retraining this whole social distancing while kids are in the hallways and, and that type of stuff. But it, it's gone really well. Our teachers have been fabulous. And really, really have, I think having kids back in the building has helped a lot. To have people feel a little bit of normalcy, being able to connect with, with kids and, and see. See all that comes with having kids back in your classroom is just a, a important thing for our staff. And, and that's where they, they shine, right, is with kids because that's what they do. And so it's been great. I have no complaints about how anything has gone so far.
Technology hold up.
Yep, technology has held up. We have not to give, had to give out all of our hotspots yet. Our iPads came in yesterday, so our elementary students will be, as soon as we can get those up and running, we'll get those out. The, we're waiting on some Chromebooks yet, but yeah, I mean, we're. Again, I'm glad we started planning when we started planning and because it's paid off and, and thanks to. All of Jen and, and Cam and Dreah, all of our ordering for all of our PPEs here and in. And our. Our dividers came in for, for the clear plastic dividers are in for staff, so yes, we're. We're, we're going to take how it's going right now, that's for sure. And our numbers are dropping. So we thought we were on a really significant increase in numbers going into the end of last week like I shared, but the last two days now. They've dropped back down, so. We will take that as well.
Yeah, I can confirm what Becky had said, so it would be Friday from five thirty to nine and then on Saturday it would be from nine to four.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And then with the crying child, that was something I was curious about as kids have really been at home. Essentially with their parents and they haven't been able to really get dropped off at the Y and things like that, that I wonder as far as attachment issues. Um, if we're going to see more of that this year or what might become of it, but maybe they're so tired of their parents at this point. Minor.
I only saw the one when I was out at the elementary schools, so, you know, but I can only be in one spot at once, so.
Yeah.
There is more than one somewhere.
Alright, Brian?
Um, I would, Bob, as you're going through, you know, on your travels, just continue to encourage. All the administrators, teachers, whomever, to continue to impress that importance of following those simple guidelines of mask. Social distancing. And the reason I'm saying that is because obviously having a child that's in universe, in a university now. I can tell you that the difference between his experience right now in Fort Worth, Texas and say Durham, North Carolina or some of the other places. It's the fact that TCU kids are following the rules. And these other schools aren't, and that's what the difference is. It's the masking and the distancing. The universities are doing it are having good outcomes. The ones that aren't are having the big old parties, aren't. I mean, it's that simple. So we can keep impressing that. I think it's gonna get us a long way to getting through this.
Yep, agreed.
Do you have our most current number for today, our COVID number?
Um, Jen, what did I tell you?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, yeah.
Yesterday was thirty-nine.
But we are at a hundred and eleven last Thursday?
Yeah, and then one thirty-five after that.
So, that's what was making us a little nervous at the end of last week. Uh, it's.
Oh, yeah, well, now we wait out. After the holiday, see where we're at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we'll keep watching it every day and when it seems kind of like what happened last week, you know, as soon as we start seeing a trend. That's exponentially different, then we start ramping up here in terms of what conversations and planning do we need to put into place? And what communications do we need to get ready? Uh, because then our process will end up being to connect with the Department of Health. Our contact there and then probably sending out some pre-messaging to families, no different than we would if we. Um, like in the winter time when we know that there's a giant snowstorm coming in four or five days. Our plan is to send some communication out to say, hey, if you haven't been paying attention, our numbers are really significant on the rise. And so we could be seeing a change coming. Please start to get ready for something like that if you need to plan for for something different. So that's at least where we're gonna go. That's our thought process right now.
Okay. Alright. Do we have anything else to cover tonight? Feel like the budget was a pretty heavy one, so.
It is a heavy one. So we will, I think from an o- uh, official kind of conversation standpoint, then we'll plan to. Have this back on as probably a report at the board meeting. So that as a board, you can have another round of discussions around this. Um, so that, so that you can have all of you at the table at once.
Yeah, and I think keeping us updated at regular intervals and um, up to date just lets us keep thinking about it as well on our own. For when the the time comes for us to really weigh in on decisions and things like that, we'll feel more prepared.
Okay.
I think we should touch base on uh, committees. Let's see, facilities is meeting next week, right?
Let me get that screen up.
Um.
I think that.
Policies.
I don't have that planner up here. I thought it was two weeks.
Is it two weeks?
Twenty-first, September twenty-first. Um, and policy committee, we've decided we're super go-getters and so we're, we're gonna do two meetings a month. Um, one to go over the ones that are just quick okays would be one meeting and then a second meeting to kind of go into. Policies that require substantial edits or are coming from scratch. So. Anything else?
I'll just, just a quick note that I will not be at the uh, board meeting this month. I'll be out of town, so.
Alright.
Travel safely.
Thank you. Fishing rod in hand.
Um, that could be, that that could be true, yes.
Enjoy. We'll, we'll look for pictures.
Alright. Well, then I hope everyone has a great night and for all of you with kiddos, a great uh, week for your kids. Um, I'm looking at last names, so Stephanie, are your kiddos in the second cohort or the first?
They are and they're making their lunches and putting their snacks together right now, so I am anxious for them to go to school tomorrow morning. Alright, they're excited too, yeah.
Alright, well, I hope that all the kiddos have some good weeks and I know that we're still kind of working through everything. And I imagine next week we'll get an even better view once we've gone through one cycle of the. The hybrid and we'll see where that goes, so. Alright, well, have a great night and have a great trip, Scott.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Be well.
Take care.